It is six o'clock and all meetings ordered. First up is John Public Comment. Yes, sir?
Yes. Ryan Fleischer from Waitsfield.
Uh huh.
And I'm here to speak about what's going on with the school board and this what they're calling "new design." And hopefully you all received an invitation to attend some of the meetings that they're gonna be having in the next couple of weeks, is that correct?
Specifically as a board, no.
Yeah, I thought that Caitlin House, who's the chairperson of the board, invited all these schools, I'll check on that.
Well, she might have invited our reps, but I...
No, the reps, that's a different thing. This is...okay, I'm trying to get...okay. When they didn't respect your choice for the replacement representative last year, I wish I would have read an article that Valley reported that was meeting.
I don't know.
I'm real... Thank you for that. That's how I felt. I am really concerned that in the next four or five years, we could end up having two elementary schools for the four Valley towns pre-K through four with 100 students each. You know, they've been talking about some of the plans moving the seventh grade graders from the Harwood Middle School, but basically closing Harwood Middle School, moving them to Cross at Rook, which is a good school, I'm not dissing that in any way. But Bridget Neese, the superintendent's original plan from December of 2017 was that fifth through eighth would all grow through Cross at Rook. And that's gonna leave just two schools. You know, that plan, probably you were aware, talked about closing Moretown, they faced that only being Moretown at large. Basically, I'm asking you to get involved, I'm pulling the fire alarm on this one. They're working on this right now. And I'll be going to all the Valley towns, so it's not that we need to Moretown. I mean, I'll be going to all the select boards. I attend all the school board meetings, all the other meetings that I can attend, I've been very vocal about many issues. But if you don't get involved in 10 years, there's gonna be two schools for four Valley towns pre-K through four. And let me just read a little thing, I presented this at the school board also. "The big problem I have is sending Valley students to Waterbury is the loss of their energy and activity from the Valley. We want the students to be engaged in the towns in which they live and their parents attending school activities like PTA and award ceremonies and after-school activities and sports and lunches and lectures, et cetera, locally. The Valley has four excellent elementary schools and I'm sure would create an equally excellent middle school. Moving five to eight students to Waterbury would vet the Valley of all that student-parent energy and economic vitality and move it to Waterbury. I think that is very unfair and unbalanced. A sixth to eighth grade Valley middle school would have about the same number of students as Cross at does for those grades. I think that creates a good and fair balance within the district. Then both the middle schools would meet in ninth grade at Harwood on equal footing. I also have ideas to create a magnet-type program on sustainable living in the middle school that is to be determined." Basically, I have an agenda. I want a middle school created in what we call the southern end of the district, which includes all of Valley towns. It's a sort of common sense place of being the Waitsfield area, just because of its physical location, you know, related to the four Valley towns, but it wouldn't have to be necessarily. Do you know if there are problems with expanding Moretown, like if Moretown was repurposed to a middle school, Moretown School? Has it been a flood plan, or does it have other septic restrictions? Does anybody know?
It may have a septic restriction, but that could be just a matter of expanding what they have there now.
There's no physical limitation like...
Not that I'm aware of.
No. Because that's one of the things they're considering, is repurposing possibly even the Waitsfield school, the middle school.
If they were gonna do that, they had a telecom school, building a new school?
I was in construction for 20 years, I agree with you. I'm at a game for a new middle school, six to eight, I think we could build it cheaper. The problem is finding a location. If anybody can think of a location, contact me, or well, maybe, because I'm certainly the only one that's really advocate, they're pushing for this. I talked to the phone company, that field next to them would be perfect, but apparently that's a flood plant that they don't want. Halle's got what they call the fairgrounds up on the hill behind his little farm there. That's a possibility, Waitsfield also has, and I'm still working on it. The other one is Ben Fleming's, four acres next to the polo field there, and they could use the polo field for athletic activities. So I'm asking for help, and I'm saying if you guys don't pay attention, you're just gonna watch a goodbye, this is what's gonna happen.
Okay.
Okay? Nothing in it for myself, I don't have kids in the school, I've got two grandkids who actually will be leaving the country.
So you're saying a middle school, six to eight?
I think six to eight. I don't personally...there's some dispute among academics whether shifting, you know, changing schools after fourth grade or fifth grade is best. I've read articles that are on both. I'm not an academic, to be honest, I've taught and, you know, other things like that, but I'm not a professional, I don't present to be that way, but I read a lot and it makes sense of stuff. And I think six to eight, partly because it's smaller in terms of the physical construction of either a new school or any kind of renovation. It's just one grade less, it's another, roughly 60 to 70 students less if you added a fifth through eighth grade. Personally, I think that changing schools after fifth grade, the students are a little more mature and a little better. My grandson, actually, this was visiting me this weekend in Lexington, Mass., and he actually goes, they go from four through five, and then they have a six through eight, and then they go to high school in that grade.
So basically, you'd have one, two middle schools, Houghton Berry, Ducksbury, and then a Valley school.
I mean, think about if you lost your elementary school. Think about the effects on the town. So we're talking about doing that kind of thing to all four towns with all our students, all that energy going up to Waterbury. Where do students go after school or sports event to get creamies or whatever, or get pizza, or parents having to drive back and forth to pick up the bus thing? You know, it's a little longer, it's a footprint, you know, a bigger apartment footprint, probably not the most dramatic effect, but just think of all that energy going up to Waterbury. And then what, parents? You know, we're already having problems keeping parents with young families moving here. I've gotta unfortunately proudly face the needs to be closed, there's almost 68 students that just canceled the third grade, you know. Convert it to housing for families, offer them incentive, affordable housing, or for teachers who have young kids. The only way we're gonna reduce the tax costs on our education is by getting more students. None of this consolidation, no cutting teachers, no cutting programs, no prison buildings, at best will slow the rate of increase, which is better than nothing, but we're not gonna reduce costs. The only way, we've got the same resources, a class that's got a teacher that's got 16 or 18 students, that's capable of having 25, you're gonna get the same amount of money with the same classroom and the same teacher, and then you get more money and it'll reduce the tax rate, or at least keep it from going up. So I'm talking about being creative and creating incentives to have people move in. I have an idea, like I said, about a middle school that's kind of like focused on sustainable living, just because of the energy we have for growing things here in the Valley, fruit production, you know, bulk production, you know, things like that. STEM is a big thing now, you know, we could have, but you can get very technical with a lot of agriculture, growing indoors and computerized nutrients and stuff like that. Anyway, I'm just asking for your help, I'm asking you to get involved, pay attention. You should have received an invitation, maybe you just slipped by. If not, there's gonna be activities, probably it'll be in the Valley Reporter, Katie knows about this, if not, I can email you the list, and there over the next couple of weeks, there'll be some during the daytime. Do you want here in Moretown, definitely, one in each town, seven daytimes, you're gonna be in charge of the schools, I'll make sure that you get that.
Who's listed on Portman, wasn't it? The list of...
Yes, Christine Solan posted that, exactly, yes. But you should have received, because I spoke to the school board about inviting all the select boards, and I was told it was done, so I will double check on that. I'm not on the school board, I wanna be clear, I don't have any official capacity with the school board, I've just given help.
Yeah, okay. Now, I mean, we've discussed this as a board quite a bit, and certainly we're just, we have this shared opinion that these are community, this is the community of our schools. And Moretown is very vibrant, and we've never really been able to get a straight answer from the school board as to why they've targeted Moretown. I mean, it just doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to it. In terms of one of the schools they're talking about to close, I mean, there's just, there's just no reason that we can say. And nobody can see there's a wire or anything here.
Basis is hard because it's small, but they're like ranked among, they're like number one, now they're like four to fifth in the state, you know. So, no, it's nothing personal, I hate to say it, you know, for Moretown, but I'm sure it isn't. Let's just say the superintendent's ideas are not my favorite. I've written a couple pieces that you may have read in the Valley before.
I kept on looking. I have nothing against ideas being floated, but we've never seen any solid detailed plans with reasons to do what they're suggesting.
They haven't had any, they just put out ideas with no backup and no basis, but they are developing those now. They've actually had a couple of votes that would have moved all the students, they've had two votes already that would have moved the seventh grade graders to Cross at Rook. Fortunately, they got voted down. But I raised hell when I came back last March and saw what was going on, and I actually got censored at the board, I don't know if people have been there, they tried to shut me down, and then they divorced, you can't do that. But they, and that was, they're doing better now, I'll give them some credit, they're doing better with their organization. Doesn't mean they're reasons, they're, you know, question hearing from the community, that's what all these meetings are about really, but they're not like academic or intellectual studies, not what's best. You know, Bridget put it, the superintendent put out, he said, "Oh, we could save a million dollars if we moved this," but he didn't have any basis for it. No, you know, and I'm a stickler, okay, show me the money, you know, show, you know. Like I said, I work in construction, I just tore apart the presentations they've had from the architect, this true ex-college, you know, it just wasn't honest. And architects are always gonna try and build up because they wanna have their name on something, you know. That's their job, that's fine, it's my job, it was as a contractor, working for a client to make the cost reasonable. So I appreciate you hearing me out, I'm begging you to get involved in any way you can, send representatives, at least, or all of you, attend one or more of these meetings, I don't even have to be in the room, I don't have to be anywhere. Come to the school board, speak up, ask questions. If they feel they're getting oversight, they're gonna probably be, you know, more responsive. And I will say that the new chairperson is much better than the previous one, she's much more open and trying to include the community, so I'll give them credit, they're doing better, but this next, it's not like next year, they're talking about making decisions, having information now that they'll make a decision in September for presenting a bond in next March for Tavleed. And it could be anywhere from 20 to 36 million dollars.
It says a week.
Don't get me started. Too late. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to help in any way I can, I will send you an email so that you'll have my email address, and thank you for the time.
Great.
Do you wanna write down your name and email on here, actually?
Sure.
Okay, next up is Dan Von Trapp. Actually, I spoke with Dan earlier today, he's down building a pond and had a request to the select board, so.
Yes.
Go to it.
So, hi, you said, Dan Von Trapp. Mama Jordan have farm, they'll go farm off Gold Road, up South Hill. And yeah, I'm in the permitting process, and just today with David working through it, and it came to the end where there's the feet. And with pond construction, apparently, I don't know, how many ponds have been built in Moretown, but anyways, it seems kind of funny that square footage is used, just like house square footage is used, because it's a structure, you know. So roughly, my plans are about 250 feet by 50 feet, and so it seemed to me kind of like a, is it 10 cents per square foot? So it's 1,250 bucks. Wow, that's kind of splash, but whatever. But we had an idea that if there's interest, if the town wants to be able to use the pond as a fire pond, or a, I guess, would be called a fire pond, or a, yeah, access to be able to grab water from it whenever they feel necessary, I would be totally down with that being the case if you guys were to weigh the fee. So that's what I'm proposing, is if I don't have to pay that fee, then, I don't know, if it sounds like a good thing, it's, no, it sounds like fairly ill-admitted, but...
Yeah, I don't know where our fire access is in that area, whether, you know, whether we ever have a pond there or not, I don't know.
I don't think there is any, there's nothing up there.
I don't, there's, no, pretty positively.
Yeah, I, yeah, there isn't, yeah.
I can't remember instances of this in the past, but...
I mean, where do you guys know, is there certain locations?
I mean, we have one over here at the Matt River.
Right off of 100B.
Yeah, right, well, down across from the garage, right? Then there's one down further on 100B.
And we have one on Moretown Conlon, I believe.
There's one on the con, there's definitely not one on South Hill.
Correct.
I have a 30-foot pond.
Really? This house is really close to mine, so.
So your pond is accessible, you know, with the fire equipment?
Yeah, so we're right at the very end of Gold Road, and so basically the power turn around is our driveway, and then there's a little, it's about 50 feet, it kind of goes up a steeper grade, right to where the pond would be, and that's, I mean, we drive on it all the time, I don't know if it's something that, that we thought this was a good idea, and then you're like, have the town guys maybe just upgrade that little section to more of a maintained, better access for the fire department to be able to access, I don't know, just in case, you know, it's like, you, I don't even know how you get the water out of, is it like, do they have to have a hydrant hookup, or?
They have a special, a special, like what they call a dry hydrant that they build into the pond, which they can put their hoses on to. But it depends, I believe, they could just stick a pump in there and pump the water out. But, so I'm suggesting that maybe the fire chief, get together with the fire chief and zoning administrator, take a look, and, you know, if it works, you know, I think that's a reasonable solution.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
If it works with the fire department.
Yeah, okay.
I think...
They're what?
They're in a meeting right now.
Are they?
Yeah.
So that makes sense, I mean, I can use...
I don't think they've signed anything.
I don't think they've gone on the line.
No.
Okay, cool.
I also wanna find out a little bit more Republican right now, to what use these put, what work has to be done to permit a pond, it does sound like a lot, so, you know, we may want something, but not 1,250.
Right.
I have no idea what it takes to permit a pond, and I think I see somebody in the back that can tell me.
That might be a study of song, yeah.
Pond is a structure. Pond is built as a hole in the ground under grade, it is something that can be approved by the zoning administrator. In this case, there's going to be a burn, a dam built up, and in those cases, it's a conditional use that requires the DRB. So there's going to be a DRB fee associated with this application, as well as the building permit application. I looked hard and long because that 1,250 dollars seemed a little steep to me, but according to the rules, it's a structure, and that's the price per square foot, and that's what it comes out to. As a constellation to Mr. Van Trapp, we don't charge for deaths, so.
Now, what I consider kind of zero of this is effectively that it's a dam, if we were ground level, we could never issue.
Right.
And as a dam, there were then questions regarding what it might affect if we were fed, so how high would it?
As a dam, as a burn, it's a conditional use, and the zoning requires that there be a certificate of safety provided by a licensed engineer, and that's gonna be under the review process for the DRB.
And so then it's paid for by the DRB and not the applicants?
No, that's...
You pay for that anyway, so.
So there's that fee, the engineering fee, and then there's a DRB fee, which is, you know, so it's gonna be 275 dollars for the DRB, and then at least 500 dollars for engineering the thing, so then for me to look at another 1,250, I'm like, ah, it's starting to...
Okay, so 275 for the DRB plus the 1,250 based on square foot, plus your expenses for each year, so.
So don't expand your pond.
Unless you wanna just go down.
Well, I think Ray's suggestion is a good one, as a matter of fact, if you wanna scoot over there and talk to them now, Stephen Pratt is the fire chief, and if they can just tell you that we're here, and, you know, please, they say yay, then I'll look, hold a lot of weight with us, that's for sure.
And so if they think it's a good idea, you guys think it's a good idea, or where does this go from here?
Yeah, you're probably looking to start, survive and later.
Yeah, I'm actually like really jumping at the bit because of multiple things, but we, you know, we hold events, and there's events coming up, and I'd like to be able to get this thing in the ground and grass starting to grow anyways before, so it doesn't look like a bomb went off up there.
Right.
And I should have started this months ago, I didn't, but anyways.
Seems like we need some sort of legal agreement or something that...
A right of way, you need a right of way, yeah.
Yeah, something guarantees access, you know.
Right.
Suggestion for that could be to have that in the process of petition upon approval by the DRB, so that access is required, and that might be cheaper than having a lawyer do an amusement. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, I'm just suggesting that could be a possible alternative to that.
And that would include anything that would have to get access to the truck? That would also be a permit commission?
Yeah, you could put that in.
You could put these...
You had mentioned that support might be...
Upgrading of the road.
Possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if that's what the fire department and/or town crew decided was the best way to do it in order to facilitate getting trucks up there safely year-round or whatever, that's fine, I mean, yeah.
All right, well, I'd say scoot over there, I mean, it could be, well, we can...
So scoot back now? Unless you get a...
I don't know that we, I don't...
Run home with death pellets?
Yeah, I don't know that we can make a decision, but we don't have the full word, but...
Oh, okay.
But, and again, I don't wanna have to pull you up either.
Well, yeah, is that, I mean, is there a possibility that we can get a decision without having full word?
You can always do it pending, you can wait for the fee as of tonight pending the next board meeting discussion.
Right, right.
So you could start, yeah, in the process.
And not to throw it, equals in what, do we need to get any input from the DRB?
They're not, they're not reading it, anyway.
Right.
Yeah, they're not up there, they need, so probably won't be able to start.
Oh, no, exactly, I can't start until I have the meeting.
Yeah.
I have a couple of weeks to have it in the paper, and then my neighbors know about it. But I'd like to be able to just check anything and everything off the list, as soon as possible.
Sure, okay. Okay, well...
All right, I'll go do that.
Call that, yeah.
And do the callback.
Okay, sounds good.
Stephen Pratt.
Stephen Pratt, yeah.
I texted, I'm not sure if you're coming.
Okay. All right, thank you guys, we'll be back.
I could get an email from the DRB saying that it would probably be this month, they would wanna try and beat up on this month, their meeting.
Mm-hmm, oh, good, okay. Now, Carl is probably here for some vision.
No, I'm actually here for, first for a public comment or discussion or...
Sure.
...for, I'm gonna move the front open. So beginning next year, there's gonna be a sugar operation on my property in Bradley Road, and there won't be a Sugar House on site, so the staff's gonna need to be trucked off of Bradley Road, the Sugar House. And the end of Bradley Road is now class four, and it's about point, 1.8 miles, I guess, long with the class four section. And the road really needs to be upgraded because it's, at that point, after it goes from class three to class four, it's pretty much a ditch at this point. Many years ago, Craig was gonna upgrade the road, but it was one of those projects that was on the back burner that never got finished. So we've looked at trying to upgrade the road, but the road basically is in a hollow now, and there's probably a foot and a half banks on either side of the road, so to bring the road up so that it would actually shed water, you have to bring the road up a couple of feet, which is not really a viable option. There's high ground to the left of the existing road that would make a nice road, but then the existing road would continue to be a ditch, basically. So I'm wondering about the possibility of the town possibly giving up that last section of the town road, so we can just, we can use it as a ditch, we can get this out, or, I don't know if that's possible or not, but that's kind of the way I'm thinking, is financially it's much easier to fix the high ground adjacent to the existing road than this to fill up the old town roadway.
So the high ground we're talking about, that's on, is that town right away, or is it in the, is it on the right of land?
Yes, yes, yeah, it's a, you know, I don't know what the, is it class four, we're gonna 50-foot right away too, or is it 25 feet or...
I think it's, it's either two or three or five, I guess, some, they vary.
Yeah, so portions of it are probably still in the town right away. It pretty much would follow in almost exactly the town road except over 25 feet from the sign line, and then continue on from there, gradually moves away from the existing town road, but it's, I know that Martin has talked to the sugar maker about it, and, or you, we don't have any, hey, he's right there, hey, Martin? You available for a second? Talking Bradley Road and sugar, right?
Yeah, I spoke to you a little bit about it, and...
Yeah, so I kinda told him it's kind of a ditch now, to bring the road up, so you can actually have ditches and whatever, it's a different project.
Yes, for the end, I told Timmy that I'd be willing to probably put a little, maybe Yes, for the end, I told Timmy that I'd be willing to probably put a little name to end to get to where I turn around anyways, because there's no material there, as it is right now anyways. So I told him I'd be willing to put a little bit into that just to help myself out, but it would be all on him from there above.
So my conversation has been, can we get the town to abandon the end of the road and build a new road next to it, or that's kind of what I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
Just so you know. So what do you, how do you feel, Martin?
I guess I don't, I guess I'm Switzerland. Neutral, I don't know. I don't, didn't have a really thought about it. I guess that'd be a town decision, it's like a poor decision if there's any value to having keeping that. Like honestly, don't even know where it goes.
We'd have to have a hearing or something.
Yeah.
Like a big process to.
It's not, it's just in there.
Who's on that section of the plus four?
Nobody. Okay, okay. Makes it easier. Usually all the house at the end of the road, there's no one there. Anyway, that's my, my new thoughts on the road. You can, I don't know, do I have to make a formal request or I'm sure I'll explore a little more of Martin's, see what he says. Just letting him know the process of considering that.
Why, why would the town have to abandon the near portion? I guess it's not clear to me why, why the town had to abandon.
Well, if we build a road on high ground next door and shape it so that water's going to flow off the road like it should, it's going to go even to town right away.
Okay.
And continue bringing town, that's the lowest point is the, is the road itself. So all the water runs down the road as opposed to beating the surface of the road. And going even the ditch. The road is the ditch, basically, so it's a concrete.
There were no standards for you building a new road either? Because they wouldn't be in a right of way or anything? So they can build the road home.
Do I need something for you to survey to weigh this out?
Would I need something, or do I have something, or?
I'm needing all of those.
Yeah, I don't, I can probably guess I'm in that territory.
Yeah, I'm just thinking to have a hearing, you have to show people what.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know the whole process, but certainly, I take things not under the reasonable question. I think it's going to be a process to go through.
Yeah, because the other alternatives is to get a permit to work in the right of way. So that's another thing I'd come to plan to write. It just would be quite a process to create a ditch on that road now, rather than, you can build it up, I suppose, because on the territory.
Right.
So far, I like your idea better.
What's that?
So far, I like your idea better than building up that road.
You know, I guess it really, I think, I think we really would have to cite maybe how to look at what you're saying.
Yeah.
Once we all understand what's going on there. That may be the first step. As a, as a public meeting out there, that way we could all.
Much like Dan, something I'd like to do this summer, just to have rate for next season.
Yeah.
Maybe get that on the agenda sometime.
David, do you have something?
I'm going to force to be sure that the landowner there isn't adversely affected by throwing up a road and losing odds.
This is him, he's the landowner.
He's the landowner?
Yeah, Carl's the landowner.
We all hear his idea. I think he's. So possibly before a meeting, you know, we could meet out there half hour early and have a site meeting or something like that. Check the town.
Yeah. And I think my main concern would be in terms of the new road, it would have an effect on the class three portion.
Right. So, yeah. So it sounded like Martin wanted a turnaround at the end, right? And then he'd take.
Yeah, that's right, you turn around at the top now, right? I do. We historically turned around at the last house, Dale Ray, but it has pavement. So we were backing onto this pavement and that was starting to crack and squish, so the last five or six years, I've gone up another hundred yards maybe to the top, to the turnaround. And it's fine, just, you know, in the first couple of times out in mud season, because there is really, there is no material on that section of road. So the conversation I had with Timmy Le Buff was that since I was using it anyways, I'd be, I think it would be, you know, to build it up to somewhat so that it at least can handle the town truck turning around there. Anyways, it was on the, you know, my work agenda anyways, it just hasn't been done yet, so. Probably three, four loads of, you know, gravel, probably a couple, bank around something to give it a base and then just a very thin top coat. And if you can handle the town truck, then it should handle the, um, sap traffic, you know, the truck loader with the sap, so.
Thank you.
All right.
So after you have a, here's the petition, you have a hearing, you have to see it. And then if you say yes, he can do it, then you have to have the survey done before he can finish doing it. And then based on the survey, you make that next decision.
That's working.
Did you have to email us? Yes.
Okay, so. Let's see, we've got reports and communications.
Looks like Martin's here maybe to get, I don't know, what state.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're fine.
There we go.
Okay, Martin, why don't we do that? So Tom, Tom spoke with you and.
Yes, correct. Yes, we spoke numerous times. He's been dealing with both heritage and St. Jacy's. We came to the conclusion that we believe that the Dodge is the best bet for our point in time. So Tom, so it'd be another $500 on the trade in, on the truck sum. That's what we would like to do is get the Dodge.
Okay.
And that's what St. J?
Correct, that's St. J.
And what's the final price difference between that and Ford?
They were almost identical as far as the cabin chassis. The heritage for was going to give us 7,000 for trade in and St. J's doing us 9,000 for trade, so.
Okay. Okay, so is there a purchase order already yet?
Yes. Yep, I would have brought one.
So what is the warrant, Tom?
What is the final cost, you know, after you give it to account?
Sixty-four.
That's the complete truck?
That's a trade in.
Yep, then, who was article what, seventy-five?
Sixty-four with a comment?
Uh, yeah, sixty-four and change, sixty-four or five, sixty-four or five, I want to say, but I don't.
Is that the one that's in stock or is that?
That is the, yes, that's the twenty, that's the one in stock built. Directly, we basically have it as soon as the warrant sign and check is cut, it will need to go to your points for a few accessories, backup camera. A few accessories, but basically the plow and sander will both be through your points and will be, we could be, assuming you have them in stock, but I don't know that for sure, so.
Is that a keep, that's probably not a good 64,000.
It is, yeah, that's complete, right.
You plan to try, we'll try to then, plow and sander, maybe.
Correct, they would run up, you know, try to plan it, possible for, be down for two days maybe or something like that. We'll go from there.
Did you want to mention the finance committee recommendations?
Right, yeah. So the last financial review committee that we met last week and one of the things we're going to bring to the slide board was the fact of using the capital reserve fund to pay for the truck and to pay it over a three-year period. And, yeah, so that was, that was that. The second thing that we talked about was in June 5th, I think, the CD matures, so we were bringing that back to Ford to renew that, with Martha's say as well, so. So, I mean, I had, perhaps ratioing the motion, if you're asking.
How much money would be left in the capital reserve?
Of the cap, a hundred and ten, I think, a hundred, like 111,000 in the back of the reserve.
So you'd like a motion, there would be two motions, one to buy the truck and then one about the financing, or are we just?
Yeah, actually, yeah, but actually, I think probably it would be good to act, so. First, the truck, buy the truck, then I would say, you know, accept the recommendation of the financial review committee to use those ones to pay for.
That'll be the second question.
Yeah. Right, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and proceed with the purchase of the 2018 Dodge from St. Johnberry Dodge, for the, for the, for the price of right then. Do I need to put the price?
I'll put the exact number and I want it sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Well, when I write it off, I'll put the exact number.
For under 65,000.
Here we go.
Add a price to determine, the exact price to be written in right back.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on that? While in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, okay.
And I'd like to all make a motion that we finance the truck through the capital savings reserve to be paid back over a period of three years.
Per recommendation.
Per the recommendation of the finance.
Finance review committee.
Finance review committee.
And I'm thinking we should probably not use the word finance the truck that way.
Yeah, pay.
Pay for. And over the next three years, we'll put in a budget line item to pay back the, which
So you're going to pay for it all at once?
Yeah.
Out of the reserve?
Right, right.
It'd take three years to pay it back?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
You want to read back my motion?
So you're making a motion to pay for the truck out of the savings reserve fund.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve fund to be paid back over three years as a line item in the budget.
Per recommendation.
As a line item.
As recommended by the finance review.
Gotcha.
That's your motion.
Okay.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on that? While in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, okay.
Do you want to do the CD?
Sure, might as well.
I guess we can do that one too.
Oh, I think I, I think one of us, I'll make that motion if we accept the recommendation of the financial review committee to renew the CD that's currently with Martha's say that's backed for another nine months at a rate, we believe the rate is two and a quarter. At least it was two months ago. Sheryl was pretty close.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that?
A rate of at least, in case it's gone up.
At a rate of, well, at.
You could just put, not at nine months.
Yeah, I would say just a little. Okay, any more discussion? While in favor of that, say aye. Aye. Good, okay. What else you have?
One of the other, that I have was that email I sent regarding Brown to a road.
Right.
A gentleman, that's Jason Mombardo, has a moving day. He has since got back to me after the email went out and said he contacted the cabin company and said that the date is tentatively been moved to August 1st and said.
Okay, so that's.
I will speak with him, I said that was a fairly tight front line, so I give him, but give us a few more months.
Good.
So I just, I do believe there'll have to be some work done to that road. Make it aware, he's going to apply for the road work permit.
So he knows he's doing all the work.
Correct, yes, he, yes.
He's not expecting the family?
Nothing. The contractor was looking for recommendations. Yes, contracted through the cabin company, but so I think he's a peanut policy, but we're there, I just, you know.
So we do, I mean, he's going to work it right away.
Correct, so he's going, yes, yes, so he's going to need to get a road work permit and probably cut a few trees, I'm guessing, to get the 14-foot minimum. Maybe not, it's pretty tight up there, I'm just going off of memory. And then, so he'll just need to do that and I know there was some discussion, I know I've talked with Sheryl probably a year or better ago, and whether that was actually a one rod right away or a two rod right away, so something that we may want to do the research on before the work is done. My general thought was that, oh, over at least two rods. That was my general thinking, but if there's some other, you know, information out there or something, we should probably learn from that.
So whereabouts up there is that?
He's at the end, he's at the, the year, what they call the year, which is up past the A-games, I believe.
Oh, up there, they go to the.
Yeah, I believe, so, yes. So it's all the way. All the way up there.
Is that gonna be a permanent residence?
Yes.
So, does he know he needs to go through the...
I assume so, for the, yeah, for the, um, resident permanent, yeah, I assume so. I did have that conversation with him. He seemed to... He don't real, he don't realize that there was a lot to this area, so.
So I think, uh...
Make sure he has that.
Yeah, he's gonna apply for a road permit, but he should remind him to meet...
Oh, he needs to...
Yeah, he needs to have a permanent, I think on a class four road for a permanent, for a residence. He'd have, he have those VRB. First of all, that's how it reads.
Then he definitely doesn't have one yet, because there hasn't been any VRB here.
I think that's where his only reads.
I have no idea.
Because, uh, because the maintenance of the winter time.
Right.
Emergency access, that's gonna be an issue.
Right.
Or that's his privileges.
Right, down the road, they're tram charged as well. Fire truck, they don't touch it, get here, they can't get here, so the town has to do some work and then they can't run it, so, oh, for your permit, you were obligated to keep it so.
Yeah, so it's something, you probably know about that, that's...
Yeah.
To get a fire vehicle up there.
Yeah.
In the winter time, it's gonna take a lot of work.
That's really all I've got.
As long as you're here, could I ask a couple of quick road questions? And this is, this is just so I understand what's going on. Um, as you head towards the bottom of Moretown Common Road, there's that big...
Yeah.
Now, what's going on there, is that the clay splitting?
Yes, the clay split.
And what, what... Is there anything that could be done to make that less likely to happen?
Um, only basically that road rebuild, those are, those are going to happen. That spot is notorious for doing that, that hole thing, basically, could be dug up. I mean, you could try putting some pipe into ground, but it is all clay. I mean, it is almost entirely like, I graded it today, which it's still gonna be very soft and, um, you know, that hole will come back, but we'll try to keep that during, or just trying to get around everywhere now and get the shoulder of it and everything shaved up, so.
And the other question is also in Moretown Common Road, the culverts that have dropped? What's up with, what's up with those?
They, they tend to heat, though they will rise and fall with frost. Sometimes you'll get some water that they have got behind the culvert. Instead of going in the culvert, it'll rain beside the culvert. So it stays, holds its form until the frost goes and then it thaws and the material falls in next to the culvert. So in those, we're just basically gonna check those and make sure that the water's making it into them. The other part happens if you backfill with very nice material, like if you put a new culvert backfill with all gravel, makes perfect sense.
Right.
Unfortunately, you have all gravel in a two-foot spot and you have native soils on both sides of that. They all, it reacts differently to the frost, so the native soils will heat more, up to a foot more, and you'll have a huge dip on that, because the culvert will actually stay and the gravel will drain better, so it doesn't, so it doesn't react to the frost.
So what is the right, what is the right thing to do with it?
We need to backfill with a mixture of materials, not just gravel.
So taper away?
Correct, yes, either make a bigger opening, backfill with virgin material, material that was taken out as much as possible.
Can I say we, we did get a grant for a culvert?
Yes.
Was that something you hoped to do this year?
Yes.
Are you gonna do it yourself?
No, that's definitely a, um, a British company, but like, um...
Was that the mountain road?
Yeah, at the end of Hawk Road. There's some scouring happening on the button. Had, it's been there since Irene, a little, little bit of undermining happening on the button. So it's a, uh, Brighton Morrissey or a big, you know, company that chooses to deal with the bridge and box culverts.
Did we fix some scour on that bridge? Or am I thinking of a different bridge? Typically, I had a scour up there before.
Uh, I think it has been done once, maybe, almost, probably ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
Quite a while ago, it looks like in the past.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, it really probably is undersized. I've seen it actually not take water twice. You know, once in Irene and then take water and then, uh, once, one year after Irene, it was just one of those torrential downpours and spring and it just, it, uh, it took it, but it floods the, that side of the road, the inlet side of the road, and then it goes down into a ditch. So it doesn't really cause any issue, but it definitely undersized for the location.
Is that enough to get a grant to redo it?
Oh, yeah, I think so, but we're, you know, fifty, twenty thousand dollars, so just...
Just our share.
Just our share's gonna be.
We're just having to do what E-Trans is recommending to do.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, we get inspections done on all the structures. So, and this was a recommendation of E-Trans, basically in non-reliance at the moment because of how poor the structure is, so.
So you'll put out some sort of RFP?
Yeah, I'll have to find, work with, maybe you can help me with that, Ray. Just to find the right wording and stuff to go into that, to get that. The wording is through the inspection, probably guess that the wording is there, but, um, maybe just pick your brain on who would be the right contractors to send that out to. Do boys do anything like that?
Uh, we have in the past, it all depends on the timing.
Yeah, exactly.
This is, can you lump that with the other culverts?
As far as the, you mean the cost of it?
The RFP, just have one contractor come in and deal with it?
Oh, um, yeah, this is a box culvert. Yeah, and the culverts that we do, we install in pipe work, we typically install ourselves. So are you asking if we could lump into, like, doing work on other ones or...
Yes. So it may or may not be a good idea for you?
Yeah, right now, the grant that we applied for is strictly for this one box structure, so we'd have to either reapply, exactly, and then reapply to doing work on the others. Right now, all the rest are least satisfactory, so.
Yeah, the grant was only granted because E-Trans said they had to do it. So if they didn't have to do any other ones, you can't put it together with another one, with this grant.
Okay, very good. Excellent.
Is that a bid?
No, this is my, uh, my mail log. Price is on stone. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Martin. Have a good evening.
I think so, windows can open yet this year? You can't really open this one?
Yeah, I don't open this one before. Did it open?
So I'm back.
Yeah.
And, um, it sounds like they're totally all for it.
Okay.
So, whatever that means, um, to you guys.
Yeah.
I think, yeah. I mean, should we...
Did they say human access? Did you have that conversation?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that, um, and that, I mean, I'm all for them upgrading it if they think it needs to, um, and that was kind of like, he didn't know for sure. I mean, he, he's been up there before. I mean, Martin, he knows more probably than Stefan, but...
Yeah.
I feel like, like, right now, for instance, like, I'm driving cars in and out of my barn for storage purposes, and just a car will cut a little bit of a rut, like decent rut. So if it was this time of year, yes, you'd probably have to put something down, some fabric and maybe six inches of brush or some DC gravel, whatever.
What I don't think it's about?
Um, it's about seventy-five feet. Yeah, I mean, it'd probably be a couple, two, maybe, three loads, I don't know.
Two loads?
Yeah. So, and that's, that's up to, to you guys, then, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with that. If it needs to be upgraded, it's not a problem. And we talked about the, the potential of putting one of those hydrants in, or you said that it's not entirely necessary, like, can't do that, or as long as you can get the truck close enough, you can just throw a section or two in and...
Right. Which is what they do not do with a grant.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really, I mean, if, if they felt a hydrant was necessary, I'm fine with that, but I, if you ask me, I just assume not put a hydrant up there, if we didn't have to, and especially if it's only gonna be used, oh, maybe once a year, if that.
Right.
It's like, that'd be a waste of time and money.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how the, the procedure is exactly.
Well, I, I think we could probably give initial approval subject to what the DRB has to say.
Okay.
And, and with the expectation that the, we'll hold board, we'll, we'll run it by the next meeting. So, I mean, I just want, want Dan to be able to move forward.
And what you're doing, are we waiving the square footage fee or are we doing two...
Waiving square, I would say it's waiving square footage fee.
So the building permit fee, is that, is that what it's called, the building permit fee?
Right.
So we're waiting on the...
Building permit fee, yeah. That's what I, that's what I would like to be able to do, if that makes sense. I mean, I, I feel it, is that fair?
I think it's...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we'll see. So I can put that in the form of a motion, I guess, that, um, it's board with, I, I like the motion that we grant the approval to waiving the, um, pond...
Permit structure fee.
Permit, permit structure fee. And, um, subject to final approval of the board at next meeting and the decision of the DRB.
I'll say that. And just in the further discussion there, our intention is to keep the fee to the DRB of two seventy-five.
Unless you want to wait that term.
They have to...
Yeah.
I have to pay me too.
And you have to pay for the engineer to certify everything that he has to do for the DRB to have to.
Which I need to get on this, that's the next step.
Yeah, so the motion could also include, um, the understanding that you'll pay for the DRB fee and all other necessary costs.
But we're not sticking to him with the cost of upgrading the road, that's...
No, no, that's, that, okay, that's true too, so, yes.
I think that's, yeah, as long as you don't say anything about the road, I think it's fine, yeah.
Go ahead and use that one then?
I did.
Okay, good. And, want to favor say aye?
Aye. All right.
Very good?
Thank you.
Very good.
Sweet, my house won't run bad.
There you go.
Oh, while you were talking about the DRB, um, so I do minutes for the DRB, and I was doing them hourly. So he, um, I'm on his list of emails saying, hey, we may have a DRB meeting coming up, are you guys available? And I let him know, well, I do it for you guys, so he may be asking you if it's okay. If, I don't know, if he needs your permission for me to do that, or if he, if John can make that decision? I have no idea. I know before he talked to Tom.
Okay.
But I don't know if he needs, the DRB needs your permission to have a, pay someone two minutes.
Oh, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I didn't think so either, I just wanted to check.
They have it, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it is now seven, uh, I'll try to say that, so it is now seven oh six, and it's, I will call the public hearing for the, uh, adoption of the interim bylaws, subdivision regulations, uh, to order. And I thought that Karen Orne or somebody from the planning commission was gonna be here, but I guess not. And so Carl? You want me to go?
Sure thing.
Okay, so, uh, the warning for this meeting refers to, um, twenty-four VSA, section four four one five interim bylaws. So I went and I looked up the interim bylaw statute, and I read it. And the interesting part of it was, I'll just read a couple, uh, lines here. Okay, these interim bylaws shall be adopted, reenacted, extended, or amended by the legislative body of the municipality after public hearing upon public notice as an emergency measure. So it sounds like interim bylaws are supposed to be enacted as an emergency measure rather than to cover up for perhaps an administrative clerical error, which resulted in the vote not happening on town meeting day. I went back and researched the whole subdivision subject in relation to the planning commission they started working on in twenty sixteen, worked on in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and finally in twenty nineteen, got to the point where it was ready for a vote that did not happen on town meeting day, for whatever reason. Then it was requested that these bylaws be enacted by interim bylaws. But the way I read the bylaw statute, it seems to suggest that you enact interim bylaws because there's an emergency that, that needs to be addressed. My point there being that in twenty sixteen, there were seven subdivision applications. In twenty seventeen, there were three. In twenty eighteen, there were three. So we're getting either progressively less or the same number of subdivisions every year. It would not seem to constitute an emergency at this point to have interim bylaws put in place. I would further suggest that we just table the idea until next year and vote on it like we were supposed to on town meeting day. That's kind of the gist of my, uh, my statement. And I'm not sure, do you have a quorum anyway tonight? Can we even vote on anything tonight?
You have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
What does it say that VSA again was the next number, twenty-four VSA?
Uh, forty-four fifteen.
Forty-four fifteen interim bylaws and four 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 full appearance.
Do you notice that chapter contains a definition of emergency in that chapter? I did not. But it specifically says, uh, as an emergency measure. So I'm not sure that we have an emergency that needs to be addressed by subdivision laws at this time, since it's been a four-year process that was supposed to be voted on. And if you read this year's town report, the planning commission section states that, uh, we spent a good deal of time reviewing and revising and proposed the right subdivision regulations to the Moretown zoning bylaw. Both the planning commission and select board held hearings on the draft regulations, and you will find a question on the town meeting ballot asking if the town will adopt them. And then if you look for the warning for the ballot, item number thirteen says, shall the votes of the town in Moretown vote to adopt revisions to Moretown zoning regulations as presented by the, to the select board by the planning commission? as presented by the, to the select board by the planning commission? All of those subdivision regulations, 40 new bylaws during the ballot. So, I guess I object to the substance of the, of the zoning bylaws. I object to the execution of the, of the vote. I object to using interim bylaws as a way to thwart the vote that should have happened on town meeting.
I think what emergency stands for there. So, it's, so before that, where it says emergency, it says, the legislative body may adopt interim bylaws regulating land developments in all or part of the municipality in order to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare and provide for orderly physical and economical growth. So, I would say if you, if they feel one of those needs to happen, that deems an emergency. So, those are your guidelines.
Thank you. And that's in that?
Yeah, the same one. Yeah, and the one he read is right up there.
I got it. And you mentioned that you object to the contents of the revised bylaws.
Yes.
I had the mistaken impression that after all the revisions, you were okay with them?
It's, it's far better than the 17 pages the original was, but there's still some shells and there's many open-ended requirements in there, such as landscaping requirements associated with shell, appropriate landscaping relative to the neighborhood. What does that mean? What authority decides what is appropriate landscaping? Is that the DRB? Is that, you have to produce a professional plan from a landscape architect to say this is appropriate landscaping? I've, I've had someone prepare one of those before. It's not a cheap endeavor to, to produce a landscaping plan. That's, that's one specific, one I can think of. I'm sure there's others, if you'd like other examples, but.
Now, my memory even going to things like subdivision regulations, it's not the best of the world, but I haven't been a member of refer to those reductions before, or is that?
I should have mentioned that.
Yes.
Yeah, there were many more shells and previous provisions that did get removed, thankfully. But there's still some loose ends hanging as far as that concern. And then, I guess my other comment would be, given the shape and attendance of this meeting, either people don't know or they don't care, but maybe they should. It might be better off if people know now before they have to go to their zone administrator and find out there's things they may not think are in there. And that just will cause people to complain after the fact rather than before.
Is there any general election we've ever heard this year?
Yes.
Yep?
Yeah.
No, there's one.
Which is?
No.
Which is?
No.
Which is?
So, the next, actually, this town meeting?
So, as, as far as letting people know, I mean, you guys know, it's on front porch forum, it's in the paper, it's on our website, hung up.
Yes, and no one has ever paid any attention?
No, so, it's definitely advertised that these hearings happen.
Well, yeah, I know, and it's been well advertised, yeah. Pretty much all of them, the events, you're in.
Yep.
So.
Do you know why the changes you recommended didn't make it through the planning commission's submitted version?
No.
Not really. And, and once they were told about something five times, usually the change, I do.
Yeah. It's weird than it was, because originally it was, they had to face the zoning with our, with our, that's how it started out. And we didn't have time to face it.
It's a little, the landscaping part, it's a little more specific than what they said. I mean, it gives what you do, what you should do and where it's, so there's the landscaping part, and it quotes where the standards should be found.
So, the, what I understand is, it's a, it's triggering.
According to.
Yeah. Well, it has to find by the agency of natural resources. So, it does say where that's, those are the standards.
So, I'm just, what is triggering the emergency situation, I believe, is the land, the large tracks that are for sale on Moore Town Mountain Road? I think that's, that's towards why I'm just getting that there was some concern that somebody was going to try those and start a major development, which would have to go through Act 250 anyways, I think.
Yes.
Carl, how do you feel about our accepting this stuff and then working on amending the things that are too specific or insufficiently specific?
I don't feel comfortable with that. I just, it's like, let's see how badly we can do it, and if we can't get it done that way, we'll just stick it in the back door, basically. And that's, that's the fact. It should have been voted on, on town meeting day. It was not, and now all of a sudden, we need it regardless. And I don't understand the rush to put it in now as an interim zoning. There is no emergency to subdivisions, the, the number of subdivisions has been going down in or flatlining, let's say. So, it's not like we're overwhelmed with subdivisions. I can't say there's any public safety issue that I can see with a couple subdivisions happening in town. I think we need more subdivisions in town, to be quite honest with you, to spread the tax burden around. I'm kind of wondering why all those houses and gallery acres have not increased the grand list in, in a way that reduced everybody's tax, everybody else's taxes. There's probably 20 new homes over there in the last three years, and yet I don't think we've seen a, a drop in our taxes related to that.
But the grand list has grown up.
Right. Then shouldn't the tax burden be spread further to further people, thus reducing your taxes? That would be, I think, how I would think it would work. There should be more people paying to the, in the pot, right?
I think it's because higher specialty, that's going faster than our grand list, that's why the tax rate goes up. And so, it's not just the towns.
Right, I understand most of this education. We can have a discussion about that at this point. Well, we, we don't have to adopt this tonight, so, I mean, we're bad over here, I can adopt it next meeting if you want.
I'd also like our members to like, if you had support for this document.
I, I don't know what to say about that. It's always sick.
Why's that?
It's always sick. Yeah.
I just, I just think maybe the grades on process, do it right with the, with the vote at this point. It's not one, one, one person, one vote preference. Well, I think it's a big enough issue that we need the whole slipboard here.
I, I agree, yeah. I mean, if a member of the planning commission were here, it might be a different story, but nobody's here to do that.
So, they saw this as more of a formality because you already agreed to put it on the ballot, because you already said yes to them. So, this was just kind of a formality, so they wouldn't have to prove their case again.
There, there is a difference between opening it up to a vote and deciding who owns it.
I guess so.
Yeah, correct.
All right, so I, I mean, I guess, I guess we're in agreement. We're not going to adopt it tonight.
I'd like to hear a new zooming, excuse me.
That would be good, too.
Could we, could we get a, a legal opinion on the emergency reading of that, like, from a lawyer? What laws? Or has reality?
I, I don't, I don't know, but I mean, I, you know how thorough Cheryl is, and so, I imagine all that was, was discussed.
Well, Katrina pulled up the language, it sounded, it sounded open enough that we could do it, it's a question we should do.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, right. And I mean, that's, that's pretty typical for the statute.
You want it on the next agenda?
Yes, please.
With zoning administrator here and anybody else?
Yeah, I would, I would like, yes, I, I would like the zoning administrator here, somebody from the planning.
Well, you'll be here, of course.
And I, once, once again, and I will point out, like, the landscape and everything, is we want to follow the planning plan and structure. And, I mean, if everybody followed the way you did it, there wouldn't be any issues. I mean, Carl, doesn't everyone want it? But it's, it's not you, it's somebody who doesn't do it.
I don't want to pay for somebody else's sin.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. What else do you have?
I think it was last.
Not much else, not much else. Katie, Katie's leaving, so.
No good news, anyway.
Gosh, that was all the news.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
And speaking about what we think is for full board?
Yes.
I thought some pretty important stuff was done at the last meeting that I really wish I was here for.
Okay.
And I would prefer, because I didn't see the emergency portion, those things.
Mine, yeah.
I would have prepared that, really, if you'd be back.
Um, well, sorry.
Yeah, just.
You didn't even know what a tally horn come.
No, I was too sick. I didn't even know what happened.
Not kidding. So, let's take a look, continue with reports and communication. And the only one I have here is, we've already discussed regarding Russell Road. So, Ray, do you have anything?
I think I want to go into executive session to discuss personnel. I have a quick argument.
Okay. Be the time I don't, I want to meet and do the blame. The exact word, it says number three, the personnel, for reason number three. All right, so I'll second that.
It should be pretty clear.
Okay.
Mike?
Hi, Carl. On your favor, say aye.
Aye.